Good evening, everybody. I almost said good morning. Welcome to the May 27th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. So we will start off with a pledge of allegiance from Eileen Mondragon and Jacqueline Martinez, students from Cedar Creek Elementary.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
That's a Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Let's give them a hand. We want to have an invocation led by Dale Burke, City of Bastrop Police Chapter.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for living in a beautiful city of Bastrop, a blessed city, Lord, that's growing very quickly. Lord, we thank you tonight as there is a common purpose for the city and for the people here to come together and see thoughtful growth for this community. We thank you that we opened dialogue tonight, and we thank you for all the work that's being done behind the scenes with the city manager and each planning group. Lord, we thank you as we come together tonight. The city council will be blessed and they will have your wisdom, Lord, as they make decisions here. We thank you for all the best interests of this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We are going to start out by going into executive session for items 4A and 4B. I'll read those. 4A, "City Council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551-071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding visit Bastrop." And item 4B, "City Council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the development known as Ironwood." So it is 6:03 PM and council is in executive session. Hello, everybody. 7:18 PM and we are back in regular session. We are not taking any action at this specific moment on executive session items, but we will take action when we get to 11B, which we also discussed in executive session. So right now, we're going to move on to presentations. We will start with item 6A, the Mayor Pro Tem's report, which I need to find. Let's see here. There we go. You know, usual, you know, list of activities. On May 14th, a number of us attended the grand opening of the Everhome Suites, and I had some brief words to deliver on that one. On the 15th, I spoke to the Bastrop Elgin Smithville, Texas, our best leadership graduates and handed out their diplomas along with Judge Gregory Klaus. And on then the 16th, we had our inaugural industry business roundtable at TS Adhesives in our industrial park on behalf of our Economic Development Corporation. It was very well attended by many of the companies in our park, and thank you, Dory, for helping to organize all that. On the 19th, all of us on council met with the North End neighborhood regarding potential developments in Minerva Delgado Park, so had some very good community discussion there. On the 23rd, I testified before the Texas Senate Committee on Water and Rural Affairs and spoke in favor of a two-year pause for the Austin Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project that the Senate was considering at that moment. And then on the 24th, on Monday yesterday, Judge Gregory Klaus and I presented a joint proclamation of the city and county at the Memorial Day Ceremony in Fairview Cemetery. So lots of different activities over the last two weeks. I'll pass it off to other council members. I'll start here over my right with Councilmember Lowe.
Thank you. I just put my eyes on real quick. Good afternoon. It's good to see everybody tonight. I as well was at the Best Leadership Graduation. I was one of the graduates, and I was very pleased to be one of the graduates there. It is a great program that was put on by the chamber. And look into it if you know someone that wants to be in leadership, wants to get a better understanding of the city and how that works along with the county, definitely get involved with that program. It does a lot of good things and has a lot of good information. Also, we were at the Bridging Neighbors event at Bob Bryan Park for the movies in the park, and that was a good thing. I think it was Coco. That was, that was, it's all right. And I got, and I got to meet with a lot of people from the community and had some good conversations about a lot of things that are needed in the community, and I was pleased to do that. Also, I was at Delgado Park, and we had some great conversation there, a lot of good input, a lot of good energy on that, so we're looking forward to big things there. Also, too, I ended my last week on a very high note. I was celebrating my daughter's graduation from Bastrop High School. Yes, we're empty nesters. Amen. No, it was a very good year for Bastrop High School. They had over $4 million given in scholarships, so that is very awesome. So Bastrop is doing a great job there for the high school. Also, yesterday, we honored the fallen heroes during the Memorial Day Remembrance at Fairview Cemetery, and that was always a powerful moment. So that was my week in review, as they say.
Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So I have two names for my report. One is music and one is bulls. And what that means is the music relates to what happened at the museum on May the 17th, and it was Larry Wilson and Friends, and they redid the pickin' on the porch, and it was the biggest crowd for music in the museum that they've ever had. So that was so exciting, and it felt so great to have Larry and everyone back. And because it was so successful, a little teaser, more to come, so look forward to that. The other thing that I want to remind people, because it hasn't been publicized a lot, so I want you to be aware that this Saturday, the 31st, up at Mayfest Park, the rodeo grounds, and we just call it up on the hill, is the Bailey K. Hudson Bull Riding Event. And Bailey K. was born with spina bifida and hydrocephalus, and they've been having this event for 28 years for her. And they started the event to help with their medical bills, and it grew to help other people with special needs and also to help first responders. So all of the money that they raise goes straight to that. So that's this Saturday, May 31st, 7:00, up on the hill, bull riding. It can't be more exciting than that, so please support them and go up to the hill.
Councilperson Pluckett.
Oh, you know, I can never do better than one of their council members, but I would like to shout out to the graduates, including Ms. Lowe and my two boys, Anton and Archer.
Councilperson Foster.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to celebrate the love of Gary, and Sandy got married last night. I wanted to celebrate them. Also, our dear friend Jane Travis passed away a few months ago. Y'all may know her from the classroom. She taught in Bastrop for, I think, 33 years. You may know her from the dog park. She has held court there for many years. You know she's there because there's always a circle of chairs around her, seeking her counsel and wisdom. And there will be a celebration of her life this Sunday at her home that her daughter is hosting, so reach out if you want those details. I don't want to just blast them on the mic, but that's going to be Sunday night. And also, probably the most shocking thing I could tell you is that I baked. I baked cookies for y'all, but not really. They're no-bake cookies, so it's my birthday, and I made you all cookies, so there are some chocolate oatmeal no-bake cookies over there for you all. So please, they're not on the agenda, but they're, you're welcome to enjoy them at any time. Thank you.
Move on to item 6C, City Manager's Report. Madam City Manager.
Well, if I would have known it was your birthday, we would have had cake and punch. We didn't know it was your birthday. There's always an X, council meeting. First of all, you'll see a new face sitting next to Victoria. Welcome, Michael Muscarello, our new city secretary. So, Michael, if you'll go to the podium. Tell the council a little bit about yourself.
Mayor Pro Tem and council, everyone in attendance, thank you for your time. I'll be brief. I've just moved here from Houston Saturday with my first day here in Bastrop, my first day of work here. I've been made to feel very welcome, very, very happy to be here and look forward to becoming a part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're very happy to have Michael on board. I don't know that anybody is as happy as Victoria, though. She's already scheduled her time off. So we're going to go through some standard items on the agenda per the Mayor Pro Tem. Old Iron Bridge update, we're still expecting mobilization in less than 90 days. It's looking like mid-July. Our water wells unfortunately still have issues with our backwash motor. I have an unknown ETA for deliverable. We have, our desire is mid-June for those to be turned on. I'm hopeful. I'm not sure what it is with our projects, Indian burial grounds, et cetera, but please, everybody say a prayer that we can get that up and running. Blakely Lane and Old Austin Highway continues. Tried to reach out to the appraiser today to see where we are in that process with no look, so hopefully we get that resolved here also before end of month or within short order. The Old Austin Highway Roundabout is also, again, in redesign, no change from last meeting. We did have our wastewater plant project kickoff on Thursday, 5:15. We did sign our initial engagement. We are working on a project charter on what the expectations are, and the project charter will be built similar to liquidated damages where each part, each party is required to do certain tasks to keep us on target. I know everybody's asking about Water Street. Our boring was complete. There is additional base required. Really, we had asphalt over dirt, not a whole lot of existing base. Jimmy's laughing, but, you know, I was hopeful for something different, and so we should have our final engineering, et cetera, within 45 days. It will have to go out for bid because the project scope has changed somewhat, so that may add a little bit of time, and I know that's disappointing to people, but no more disappointing than to me. Settlements, we did do our survey. We are setting out new sidewalks there. We do have some massive ADA issues on that segment of city streets as it relates to our seniors in that area, and so now I'm awaiting a price estimate. Campo is doing an online open house transportation emission reduction plan that is online May 9th through June 9th, so please take the survey, talk to us about what strategies you'd like to see that reduce motor vehicle emissions and reducing congestion, et cetera, et cetera, improving mobility and access. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on to item 6D, a proclamation recognizing the following observances for the month of June. Well, I'll just read them. Whereas the city of Bastrop affirms its ongoing commitment to supporting a strong, healthy, and compassionate community, and whereas the month of June includes several important national and local observances that reflect the diverse needs and values of Bastrop residents, whereas June is recognized as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, encouraging education and support for those affected by cognitive disorders and promoting ongoing research and caregiving resources. And whereas June is also observed as Men's Health Month, promoting awareness, prevention, and early intervention in physical and mental health among men and boys. And whereas June is recognized nationally as Hunger Awareness Month, and the city of Bastrop is participating in this effort through a city staff food drive benefiting the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry, supporting our neighbors experiencing food insecurity. And whereas June is also observed as Pride Month, commemorating the historic pursuit of civil rights, equal treatment, and dignity for all people, and recognizing the importance of civil respect and personal freedom. And whereas these observations are meaningful to many within our community, and the city council affirms its commitment to inclusivity, wellness, and community service in all forms, now therefore I, John Kirkland, Acting Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Bastrop, Texas, do hereby recognize the various June observances and invite the residents of Bastrop to engage in learning generosity and neighborly respect as we move forward together. So that's that proclamation. Now let's move on to item 8A, which is receive a presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending April 2025. Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. I'm sorry. In prior months, I've kind of been giving y'all their summary page and asked if there was any slide that y'all would like to pull out we could discuss. This one, I'm going to do a little bit differently. We've made some changes to some of the slides, and I would like to receive council's feedback on maybe what they do and don't like to see. All funds have a positive bottom line with sales tax and electric revenue continuing to run slightly under projection. Revenue overall has exceeded projection by 11%, and I would like to point out impact fees are exceeding projections currently by 47%. I double-checked that number and triple-checked that number. Expenses run under projection currently. They're running 25, 24% below forecast. This is a new slide. This slide, I'm going to actually skip to the slide that you're actually used to seeing. This is what your guides are used to seeing. This is your sales tax, but I found this data to be kind of limiting because it only addresses general fund projection, which is really only a third of the data. Sales tax includes the general fund, EDC, and the street maintenance. So Judy put together this data for y'all, and I think that it encompasses a lot more because on the left-hand side, it breaks out your total revenue, and it does a side-by-side comparison of sales tax across several physical years. And then to the right, it gives a breakout of each month allocated amongst the street, EDC, and general fund. To me, I think this has, I don't know what I did. Okay. To me, I think this has more data for y'all. Maybe the only thing it's missing is a projection comparison, and I can put that in on the bottom if y'all would like to see it more so in that format compared to that format. Property tax is 4.2% over projection or 230K. General fund expenditures are running 94% of forecast, with water and wastewater revenue running 6.7% above forecast or 340K, while their expenses are running 97% of forecast. As I said earlier, electric revenue is running slightly below projections at 2.2%, and their expenses are running 2.6% below their forecast, which contributes to them having a positive bottom line. Hut revenue is exceeding projection by 17.8% or 372K, while their expenditures are running 91% to forecast. Development services have seen a really good month last month. Currently, development services revenue is running 37% to above forecast. This has contributed to a couple of factors. One is the Valverde developing. Bastrop ISD submitted a large permit for classroom and gym renovations, as well as some burlesque and crossing activity, which contributed to them exceeding their projections by almost double. They are running 93% to forecast on their expenses, and street maintenance is running 13% above forecast. This is another page that kind of blends in with that change in sales tax, so I kind of feel like that we could eliminate this page also. By the way, it's broken out on the sales tax page. This page was not included in your packet. This information was distributed electronically, but it is going to be added to the packet now on a regular basis. This is just a summary of travel, as well as any applicable legal fees from council. Is there any questions? Fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're now going to move on to citizens' comments. These are the items that are not on the agenda, so for item, for those of you that signed up for items that are on the agenda later, I'll be calling you up separately. Let's start with this just in, Dex Haverlock.
Dex Haverlock, 213 PO Box, Smithville, Texas, and I got the Bastrop Pride hat on. Y'all always shake it up with that proclamation bundling, saving some time and all that. So thank you so much for city, city staff, for all the work that we've had over the last six months coordinating who does this permit, how do we get this thing done. We're pushing for a lot of new cool stuff this year, and the city has really helped us figure it out, and we've helped y'all figure out where a certain piece of document needed to be updated or just maintained. So big thank you for the city for making all of our efforts come up forward. Please join us in Elgin this weekend in the evenings for our kickoff parties. Join us in Smithville at Comfort Cafe on Sunday and the Sunday Market in Smithville, and then join us Tuesday, Wednesday downtown, Friday, first Fridays, where we'll have our block parties, vendors, performances, and fully bolstering up the first Friday effort. And then finally, on Saturday, join us in the mornings for our family friendlies, and then the evenings for our performance dance and alcohol provided by 602. So thank you all again. Thank you all for a new city secretary. And in next city council meeting, we'll have our new mayor and a fully established dais. It's going to be exciting after so long. So thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dex. Sandra Ervin. Shall I have another mic? I mean, I can get this to here.
Oh, I can go closer, but then I won't be facing them.
If you want to come here.
You can speak on that microphone. That would help. There we go.
My name is Sandy Ervin. I actually grew up in Bastrop. My whole family pretty much lives here, and I recently moved back after 42 years. And thank you. And it's a culture shock. When I left, there was a population of 3,000, and yeah, it's like tripled since I left. Anyway, I have three mostly questions, just because next door has a lot of chattering, and I encouraged people to come tonight for this reason. I don't know if you're here because I asked you to, but anyway. One of my concerns, I live in the Valverde Phase 1, I guess, subdivision. I was told before I saw in the contract on my house that there was a road that had been started, and they're not quite sure when the completion date would be, but soon. I later found out that's a Blakely Lane. My family, most of them live in town, and so to have to go up to that Edward Bluestein by Lowe's and wait in that line to cross over 71, and so many generous people letting people come out of that parking lot and cut in front of those who have been waiting and waiting. So that's one concern I have is when will that road be completed?
We cannot answer any of your questions unless it's on an agenda item, but our city manager can answer them separately. They're easy to answer and have known answers.
That's fine. I'm just proposing. Okay, number two. As you can all tell, I'm disabled and have been for many, many years. I drive, and handicap parking downtown is horrendous. I took some friends that came to visit a few weeks ago to eat, and we had already decided, hey, let's go try Maxine's because I've heard about it. Could not find a handicap parking space anywhere, so I finally was like, okay, I'm going to park over by the post office. There was one, I took it, and in the rain that day, we rode, or I rode, they walked, all the way down to Maxine's. That's, and my family, my, you know, they're like elderly, so that's a big concern, and my question is, what do y'all have planned for that? And, you know, just to make it the progress in parking. And my third one. So October is Disability Awareness Month, and we don't get a whole lot of awareness and celebration and stuff. Personally, I think everybody, regardless, should be celebrated daily and not necessarily monthly. But if, so my question is, is that something that the city council will consider going forward? Is, will people with various disabilities be, will there be some type of awareness and celebration when October comes so that other people in the community can get to know us and, you know, what makes us tick? So anyway, thank you so much for your time, your attention, and hopefully we'll find out answers to my questions in going forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Ervin. So we can make a specific, these are the limitations of the Texas Open Meetings Act, specifically in terms of talking about things that either are or are not on an agenda. I can make a specific factual statement or refer you to our city manager to find answers to things. I'm going to make a specific factual statement, and that is that one exceptional venue for asking questions like this and getting immediate answers is called Sit with Sil. Sit with Sil.
With me. My name is Sylvia.
Sylvia, yes.
It's tomorrow, by the way.
And our next one is tomorrow, also a factual statement. And were you to attend that, and you had those three questions and six more, you would get nine of them answered all at one time. So I would highly recommend, if you're available tomorrow, to come to that.
I can also answer those right out there right now.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Yes, and welcome to Bastrop. Next speaking is Patty. Next speaking is Patty Moore. And Ms. Moore?
Yes.
You were speaking, the topic is muds-water, which might fit under the later agenda item, but it seemed like it was separate. Were you, and that's fine. Were you intending it to be the later agenda item or were you intending this to be a separate topic?
Just a comment topic.
Okay, got it. So this is a separate citizen's comment. So we won't be able to speak to it, but you can speak for three minutes. So start by giving us... Yes, ma'am. Yes. So, start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you'll have three minutes.
Certainly. Patty Moore, 165 Trigg Road. Pre, oh, let me turn this down. Previous, I can't really. Previously, I've requested impact studies, habitat protections, and enhancements for wildlife and for federally protected migratory birds. Tonight, I address water availability in relation to mud five. First topic, private wells. Previously mentioned, many of us two years ago had to replace wells due to lowered water tables. Now, my neighbors and I again are extremely concerned about losing our wells due to aquifer strain from Ironwood's high-density units, new wells, and yet another larger nearby 304 development on the horizon. So I'm asking, I realize you're the city, but what can you do to help protect our wells? Next topic is the status of Bastrop County's water supply in relation to development. First is an article, Development, Drought, Strain Water Resources, from the Elgin Courier dated June 22, 2025, where Claire Marks from the Lost Pines Groundwater Conservation District, the people who give well permits, educates that Bastrop primarily draws from the Carrizo Wilcox aquifer for water needs, and it is very slow recharging. And according to LPGCD, developers typically pull from the same source as residents, and the recent boom in expansion impacts available water. Marks concludes that fresh water is disappearing and that we are using too much, more than the aquifer can recharge in the long run. Next, the Texas Water Development Board's 2022 Water Plan Projects projects that towns and cities in Texas, including Bastrop County, could experience severe water shortages by 2030 if certain strategies aren't implemented. The message here is simple, less rain, more expansion, more people, less fresh water. In light of possible water shortages, private rails going dry, new wells being drilled, I ask this council to deeply consider water, our life source that is disappearing with every development being built. Also, I'd like to ask, is there a plan to expand forever? Or is there a point that you say, let's stop, we've expanded enough? And it's time to, you know, save our aquifer for the residents already living here. The future of water is difficult, but necessary because, as they say, we can't make more. Also, on the flip side of monetary gains from development, it seems large monetary losses can occur statewide from reduced water supplies. I do not envy you your difficult decisions in running your city. But I hope for more sustainable, safer alternatives to development. On my city notice, I'm asked if I'm in favor or opposed to this mud. Proactively, I do oppose mud five for the protection of fresh water. Additionally, this gives wildlife and our fragile ecosystem much-needed protection. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Perfect timing, Ms. Moore. Mr. Jimmy Crouch.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. Jimmy Crouch, 605 Buttonwood Street. Almost left that off. I just wanted to commend all of city staff involved with Development Services, including the Building Department, Water and Wastewater Utilities Streets, and BPNL. I've sat in a lot of meetings the past several months and have listened to property owners and developers talk about what a great group that the city currently has in all of these departments. And, excuse me, and what a positive difference it has been to build within the city of Bastrop compared to previous years. So, all the work that you guys have been doing is now coming up in a perfect, in a perfect time. The council, city manager Doc Cowery, Curtis Ervin, Curtis Hancock, Viviana Hamilton, and I mentioned Viviana because when I first moved to town, Viviana was here. And she was in the Building Department, and she has seen more than anybody. So I wanted to mention her and what a great job she's been doing. And police and fire and a lot of others that have changed the atmosphere in these departments for the better. Keep up the great work. What you are doing has changed things for the better. We once again have a good reputation for building at a perfect time for our development. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crouch. We're now going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone in council need to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll take that as a no. So I'm going to go ahead and read items 10A through 10D, our practices to read the second reading of the ordinance, the headings. But we will also be approving 10E and 10F in one vote. So 10A, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-52, authorizing the disbursement of $38,000 for the construction of the Fisherman's Park Walkway Improvement Project. 10B, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-49, annexing a tract of land described as 23.298 plus or minus acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey abstract number A98, located west of Farm and Market Road 969, known as Valverde, Section 2, Phase 4, as shown in Exhibit A. 10C, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-50, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 13, Utilities, Article 1302, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges by enacting Section 130213, titled Utility Pass Through Fees. And item 10D, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-51, establishing 15.8410 acres located at 1500 Farm Street, Bastrop, Texas, as designated parkland. That's all. Council?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilperson Plunkett, a second from Councilperson Foster to approve these items along with 10E and 10D, which are the meeting minutes, and a donation from Covert Chevrolet Bastrop. Council, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 11A. Items for individual consideration. 11A, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-48, amending the Comprehensive Plans, Chapter 2 and Chapter 5, as it relates to the Growth Potential Map, Community Growth Text Revisions, Land Use Categories, and the Future Land Use Map, or FLUM. Oh, it's flu? Move for a better name. Okay. Motion dies due to lack of second, yeah.
Again, Mayor Protem, Council, this is ongoing process, as you noted, Chapter 2 and Chapter 5, that half and such has worked with its own. Kind of having your staff report, this process was restarted back in November '21 or '24. A lot of public input, public engagement, joint work sessions, et cetera. I'm going to fast forward, unless there are any specific questions, to the last council meeting, which is in your staff report, my page is 87. May 13th was your last meeting, where we had the first reading on this. At that time, it was a public hearing, again, a public hearing. At that time, city council made a motion to approve the comprehensive plan with amendment to keep the property behind buckies, that was our main concern, in Lost Pine Avenues as rural, which would be considered residential conservation estate. And also, to have residential with pockets, neighborhood commercials were existing, and bring them back for individual consideration. The final version of the map, I'll let Ilda with half do her presentation, and Sylvia and Alondra and Viviana actually worked on the final maps, so I'll have them engage with the map. But basically, we have maps that's going to reflect, let Ilda do her little report here. And then we have this map, which was a 513 version. We'll discuss it a little bit. And then here's the 515 version. And this is the final proposed. If it's okay, let me, Ilda do her presentation. And I think the big discussion is going to be on what the final, what do we agree the final map's going to be? So if it's okay, Ilda?
Good evening. Happy birthday to you, Councilwoman Fosler. Ilda Capricioso with Half Associates. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to return. And hopefully, we've got our map in a good place for you guys. So as James mentioned, so from the last meeting, just as a highlight, we made, we have sort of two bits of information here. The map, the physical map updates that we made and then the actual, the additional changes we made based on some comments from the community last week and comments from council in the actual report itself. And some of that language, tightening up again, some more of that language. So, this first slide really just goes through some of the things that James highlighted, which is from the meeting, the last council meeting, we had some areas that we needed to update, which includes the area behind the buckies, to bring that to the rural, conservation rural estate. And then why we were doing that, just as you all indicated, really to make sure to protect that rural character and also because there is some challenges in terms of the terrain back there and really being able to develop back there. Revising the downtown component. So if you recall, the downtown designation, downtown Bastrop designation was that lavender, purple color. And that really sort of included a mix of both commercial and residential. And so we scaled that back so that we just identified the key downtown commercial component and then reverted much of that mixture, that downtown Bastrop designation into residential and then pockets of that mixed-use development or that neighborhood commercial. And so that's what that third bullet is. And so the rationale for each of those really includes to make sure that it better reflects that residential development or that exists, those existing residential land uses. And then, of course, supports any of those future opportunities where those pockets of neighborhood commercial could exist. And so that, so as James mentioned, this was the version that you all saw at your last meeting? No, two meetings ago, I think. And so this one, we've gone through a few iterations of this through conversation and with staff. And you can see that, let me go back really quick. You can see the larger downtown Bastrop designation. And moving forward, we scaled that back at your last meeting, had more discussion about that to really concentrate the downtown Bastrop component, really to that core commercial area. And then reverting more of that purple to that residential and then neighborhood commercial. And let's see. And then this is the final version. So we had some additions of some parkland that were added throughout some of the, let's see if I can get onto, some additional parkland that was added over here and down here. And then, as you can see, this, we've reverted all of this to that single-family residential or neighborhood residential with those pockets of neighborhood commercial. And then the downtown commercial designation along here. So, those are the key changes that were made based on the recommendations from this body and discussions with staff. So in addition to those map updates, we also went back into the report and into the land use designation definitions to refine some of the various information that included definitions for the residential conservation estate. Really, again, to go back and make sure that we're protecting that rural character and preventing the urbanization of the rural areas here in Bastrop. Revised the downtown Bastrop into a downtown commercial designation. So going back into the language to make sure that it really reflects what the map is showing. And then also changing that neighborhood residential, the downtown Bastrop, back to neighborhood residential and neighborhood commercial. And so making sure that's also reflected in the text version of the report as well. I don't know if staff or others have additional comments to add. So I think, so I think this is the map that you all are looking at to approve this evening for the final version. And so I will give it back to you all.
I want to give that map some context. So at the last council meeting, Councilmember Meyer, Councilmember Fosler had questions about the map and the colors. Council said, go work it out, go work on the yellow and the pink. More colors than yellow and pink were used. So we came back, and I won't say who did what, but you know who you are. We came back and as a staff, and not just from a future land use plan, because remember, this is a future land use plan. This is not a current plan. This is what we want to see in the future. Given the infrastructure, given the uses, given what should be neighborhood commercial and/or not, how does that relate? So that is this map. Council is more than welcome to make any adjustments, amendments, et cetera, to the map.
Okay, so I do have a question. I'm going to point at something on this map, and I want you to magically know what it is. It is the pink north of the railroad track on the left side of Main Street.
Could I get Tech to zoom in a little bit?
Yeah, Eden East. I just want...
And South, it's two properties, South.
Okay, got it. And so my question is, if those were to develop into a different use in the future than what they are now, which is a residential and a farm, in effect, a wonderful farm that's got a farmer's market on the weekend, this color would encourage it to become some kind of neighborhood commercial in the future? Right? And is that what we want, as opposed to something else, like, you know, residential?
So, an alternative to that would be to put rules in place in the definition of what a homestead farm or a fruit stand or those kinds of things. It could be that that is allowed in a residential neighborhood with certain parameters.
Well, but we're not, this map isn't for the current use.
No. It's for future land use.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm thinking of a future where, you know, Farmer Dave decides to stop farming and sells five acres of land and it gets developed into something. And this says it should be neighborhood commercial.
Yes.
And is that what we want is the fundamental question? And I don't get to vote, but anyway. So Councilperson Meyer, was that the color that you put on that location?
So, Meyer? I cannot say that I put that color on that, no. I did not. Because, and let me just give some context to that question. And I'm going to go back in history because I was on planning and zoning 1819, whenever the codes were changed. And we went to this thing called place types instead of zones. And all of the area, and that's why I was concerned about the purple, Ilda, because it was residential. And it, as you referenced, Farmer Dave's, that was residential. Even Ms., Councilmember Foster, you were residential. You upzoned to have a food truck, I believe, sandwiches or something there. But anyway, that was upzoned. But the thing is, it was all residential. And then people came before us. The process was, they were in place types instead of zones. And they came before us, they had a grace period to ask for changes if they didn't like it. Most of Main Street, Mayor Protem Kirkland, where you live, most of all, your neighbors there came and said, no, we do not want mixed use. We want to be in our neighborhood residential. Councilmember Foster, you remember, you came and asked for zoning up for the Whistle Stop. That was the name of the sandwich shop. And Farmer Dave also came. My point of saying all this to y'all is that it has always been neighborhood residential unless, and there is a process, unless you come before planning and zoning and ask for, I call it a variance. Our new terminology is a warrant. A warrant, which sounds very criminal to me, but a variance. So there is a process. That is not to say that Farmer Dave or anyone, even if they were in the yellow, still neighborhood residential. And Farmer Dave would still be because he's grandfathered today. So the people, am I right, Sylvia, on that? People currently today still keep whatever they are. It's just for future land use, is what Mayor Protem has pointed out. There is a process. If, this is not to discourage any kind of small mom-and-pop businesses at all. But to keep it neighborhood residential and to ask planning and zoning for a variance or a warrant is a process. And that means your neighbors are notified also, which is very important for the neighborhood. So that is why I am such a huge... So that is why I am such a huge advocate to preserve and protect what is already there and have a process in place as we always have. If you want to change, then you bring it forward, your neighbors get to have a say and, and continue that process. So Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, to that, all of that, except for pockets of Tracy's. And Tracy's, they wanted a change when they, they wanted the lot behind them back and they requested the lot behind Tracy's to also be mixed use. And the neighbors came and said, no, we have kids that walk to school. We don't want that lot to be commercial. They spoke up. They didn't get the zoning of that. So to answer that, I am much more an advocate to keep neighborhood residential and you have a process to change to neighborhood commercial as we always have.
Councilmember Meyer and council, to that effect, that property owners have a say, our zoning laws have always been in that. In fact, Bastrop over notices, instead of 200 feet, we go to 500 feet. There is a bill being introduced in the legislature right now, HB 24, that would make it even more difficult for property owners to protest zoning changes. Right now, 20% equals a super majority and it takes almost a unanimous decision to change a zoning. HB 24 really reduces that. So as we look at these things, it's important to remember as the legislature strips away some of those property rights, we may need to put things in place that protect today for the future.
Councilperson Fossler, do you have any questions? That's kind of what we're doing here.
I do have questions, yeah. I wanted to add one comment about the, the previous, the previous codes that were adopted in 2019. The reason why, so Main Street was originally proposed in 2019 for all of Main Street to be P4 mixed use. All of it was proposed and it got shot down at the very, very, very end. And so they offered everyone on Main Street who had been told that for nine months, that they were going to become P4 mixed use, free zone change applications because there are like 3,200 books. So that's why we came at that time and did some applications. It was a grace period and several of us got that. My question is, I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned about unintended consequences for removing, for using this degree of specificity in downtown, like for example, like just, just north of Cedar alone. I just, I grabbed the, the current, the P4 place types are 87 P4 properties north of Cedar. And in the Flume, there are now 44 neighborhood commercial properties. So what happens to those properties that we like, and it's not a zoning, because this isn't zoning, but that we downgrade, for the 43 properties that we are downgrading from their current P4 mixed use to single, just single family residential, are they losing anything? And I want to be clear that my property is in that, but I'm also asking for the other 42 properties universally, unilaterally, I'm asking for all those 42 properties that are downgraded. What, what happens to those? Is there any risk? Is there any change? Is there any, anything?
Stan, let, let Legal answer that.
I'm not aware of any risk with, with that.
So why are we doing it at all if it doesn't change anything? Does it change anything?
Well, it's, it's more of a policy decision, setting a presumptive rule going forward and then for future growth. But no, there's, there's no risk that comes to mind.
So will it, could it possibly affect the discussions at future zone changes? I mean, this will become up, right?
Yes, it can, but, so the context would be as you're moving up. So nobody's removing the zoning, contrary to what the city did prior, where you, the city did an entire sweep.
Right.
And some people didn't even know they had been rezoned until they got their tax bill, hence the folks on 95. This is not that. This is a planning document tool. We're not stripping anybody of their zoning. The zoning remains until a zoning change is put into place. Now, this tool serves the staff when somebody wants to come and change their zoning to something more intense, then the staff is going to say, the future land use map does not call for that.
All right, I got that. Okay. So even a change of use, so the zoning, because some of my neighbors asking, zoning is protected, but a change of use isn't, isn't.
This doesn't touch any of that.
It doesn't touch any of that.
This is for future planning purposes.
Okay, so it changes nothing?
Changes nothing until said property owner, if you came back and said, I want to do the whistle stop with also a bed and breakfast and some other commercial application that only fits into P5, then we would have to say, Carrie Foster, because I would assume you're not a council member trying to do that.
Right.
I would say.
I would not try to do anything up here.
Carrie, you have to submit a change of zoning application, but staff would not be able to support that application because the future land use map shows that has.
Okay, gotcha. So no one will.
Nobody's losing.
This is only for upzoning.
Correct.
And never, nobody's losing anything.
Okay. Remember, the other thing this map does is because it's residential, the intensity of our infrastructure there is a certain type, is a certain, it's for future planning purposes.
Okay, I understand that. And just speaking of living in a neighborhood where there are neighborhood services around, like I, I love it. It makes a huge difference in the walkability and livability and lovability of our neighborhoods. So like I, I want to keep that. My other question was, I think, no, I think that was it. I'll flip it if I have another.
Councilperson Plunkett.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this map, the ones that are in pink downtown right now are currently of that zoning type, correct? And how did we get?
No, so if you recall, council, there was a discussion on how much is purple, which purple is the downtown. There was a discussion on shrinking that to the areas that were appropriate and protecting the residential component. There was a discussion about, yes, but the residential component in every other zoning category in the world requires neighborhood commercial to service that neighborhood, whether it's a barber shop, an accountant, those kinds of service type related industry. So Councilmember Fossler and Councilmember Meyer took their best shot at, these are appropriate locations for neighborhood commercial.
Okay. So, and I, I agree with that. I, I think there should be, you know, that's a really large area to have no services. So if we put the land, the future land use, even if somebody bought an adjacent lot that was adjacent to one of these pink areas and said, well, okay, well, can we make this the, you know, this other is residential, this could be commercial. Then the future planners can say, yeah, okay, we intended it for it to be around here somewhere and this is where it happens to be, that makes sense. If we yellow out this whole north side, then what we're saying is, you know, we don't want commercial anywhere north of Farm Street.
Correct, correct.
And I don't think, I don't, I wouldn't want to do that.
No, and, you know, spot zoning, first of all, that's not something we want to do. This really is a planning tool. This gives staff an approximate location. It may not be that exact pink spot on the map, but tomorrow if Tracy's number two wants to build at the corner of Spring and, you know, blank, what is.
Right, it communicates a general idea that we would have a certain amount of light commercial in that area to service the neighborhood and that makes sense to me.
Are we done with questions? You're done with questions?
Sure.
Okay. So at this point in the discussion, we need a motion.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilperson Plunkett, a second from Councilperson Meyer to approve the item as is. And because the lights were on earlier, I assume there's some more discussion. Councilperson Meyer?
Yes, and now I don't have a question. I have a discussion item. Because you brought this discussion item up on this map.
By asking a question?
Yes, exactly. So that is my concern. The property that is, it's almost five acres, I guess, three to five acres, which is Eden East Farm. Looking at that, as you asked me, was that my intent? And I did not intend for that to be the light pink area. Because as Councilmember Fossler has across the street on the corner by the railroad track, that's still yellow. So that was my sharpie and light yellow was all of that light yellow. So that's my comment.
Super zoom in, leave it zoomed in into that area. I'm going to highlight the area so the folks know what, what pink or chartreuse or whatever color we're calling it.
Right. For zoning. So that large pink strip is a very large pink strip, but I'm concerned about being a lot of possibilities for a residential commercial in that area. Not to say, and I'm going to go back on what I said a while ago, not to say it couldn't be yellow and if someone, in the future, if Farmer Dave sells that property, which he may, and they want to ask for a change for zoning, which is a different thing, this is future land use, but they have the right to come and ask for a zoning change, but they would be in a neighborhood residential on the map. That's, that's my point on the large area there.
So then are you asking for an amendment?
So that would be my, yes, on the motion, I would ask if we can make an amendment to that section just right there because it, it doesn't conform to the area of what we, the future that we envision, that we've been talking about forever. And the neighbors have been talking about it forever.
So let me, for clarification purposes, let me ask, are you proposing that we change the entire, what color is this now?
Pink.
Salmon, salmon, definitely salmon. The pink color to a light yellow? Or are you proposing that we change a portion of it to light yellow that's on that block?
I'm proposing that we make it correspond to all the area around it, which would be light yellow.
Okay.
It does not change Farmer Dave right now, as Sylvia stated, at all. But in the future, because this is a future land use map, it would be neighborhood residential and they would have the option, of course, to come, as Farmer Dave did, and ask for a variance on the zoning. But we need to have a, a, a future vision for that area and, and I'm saying that whole, my thought was that whole area should be yellow.
Okay. So Councilperson Plunkett, do you accept this amendment?
I mean, the way I see it is, he currently has that use or something very similar to it.
On a piece of property that's smaller than that?
That's smaller than that, yeah. Fine. And I'm fine making it smaller. I don't, I'm not a fan of getting rid of it entirely because, again, I think what we're trying to communicate is that a, a small amount of neighborhood commercial is acceptable up there and even desired. And, you know, if we just keep erasing the pink dots because there might be, you know, we might do some commercial there, then we've made a whole homogeneous neighborhood that has to cross the river every time they want to buy something. And I didn't think we wanted to do that.
And I understand that point totally, Councilmember Plunkett, I really do, because that's exactly how it was before they asked for upzoning in that area. But that absolutely does not mean, as they were granted, that they could get that exemption and upzone. That doesn't mean that we would have all yellow because there are other people, I'm sure, in that area in the future, they're going to come and ask for other things to be in. I think it's just important to make sure that we're very clear on what it is we want the future to look like in that area for the neighborhoods and all the, all the people who live there. But it's certainly not a statement that we don't want any residential commercial, because I agree with you. That's important, just as Tracy's is, just, they have the option to do that. This is just what we, what they had before was all yellow. They did upzone and they certainly have the, the right to do that. Again, it's just if we make that whole area pink, then it's just not Eden East, it's everywhere in that area.
Maybe this helps a little bit. Neighborhood commercial is defined as small scale, neighborhood friendly retail and services integrated with or adjacent to residential areas. Emphasis on walkability, local serving retail and small scale office uses. It was previously a general commercial, which is too broad. So we've narrowed the scope significantly. Five acres is a, is a lot to put a commercial retail space in though. Just saying.
And that's kind of my, certainly nothing against Eden East, love them, so happy they're there. It's just that whole area would be that. And that's a lot of activity that we have no idea, the unintended consequences for the neighborhood and the infrastructure and everything in that area.
So Councilperson Meyer, your friendly amendment was not accepted, it seemed. And would you like to reword it or would you like to try to seek a second and have a vote on the amendment?
Can I ask Councilmember Plunkett a question on that?
Sure, certainly.
Councilmember Plunkett, the area that is Eden East Farm, is that your concern? That, that's, that area?
No, my only concern is removing a pink dot entirely. I, I'm okay with making it smaller. I'm okay with moving it, I don't care. I just want to communicate that a certain amount of.
Right.
Neighborhood residential is okay.
Absolutely. So would you be agreeable to minimize that pink dot to that property that we're talking about instead of that whole area being that? Would we be able to minimize that?
That right there. Instead of. That's fine. I'm okay with that.
So that would be my ask for the amendment, is to minimize.
So let's, let's put some words to the amendment. So I think that the amendment you're asking for is that you want to minimize that salmon-colored box to be the existing size of Eden East Farm.
Correct, thank you.
Yes.
And location?
And location, thank you, yes.
Yes, because it currently has five parcels in there right now as it's drawn and it only needs one if the address is 1910 Main Street.
Right. Okay, so Councilperson Plunkett, you said that you accept this?
I'd accept that.
Okay. So we have a friendly amendment that's been accepted. So we now are still a motion for approval with the, well, I guess it's conditional approval now, on changing the pink square in question and making it its size and location of Eden East Farm.
Are we discussing still?
Yes.
Okay.
But, well, I mean, we are still discussing and that's what the current motion on the table is.
And 60 years ago, no matter what the zoning was, it was used as a farm as well. So even though it was yellow, it was used as a Greens farm. So it was a farm lot, so it was being used as that. Yes, and we love our services up there. So I'm not for shrinking any more than this.
Is that all?
No.
Oh, you have more?
But for tonight, yes.
Oh, okay, your, your light's still on.
I am, also, I'm very disappointed that this particular one, which is like a really big deal for drawing this specificity of downtown, has gotten like four days of airtime for the public. Had this degree of specificity been, had gotten airtime this whole time, we would have totally different feedback. So I, I am, I am concerned. But considering that, like, we just agree that it doesn't matter and doesn't change anything, then I'm fine with approving it.
Okay. Are you finished?
Now I'm done, yes.
Okay. Councilperson Meyer?
So just to say the other side of that statement, we've had so much feedback and I understand what you're saying about the colors, however, the feedback for however long we've been doing this, and especially the feedback, because this, this comes into the public comments and the hearings we've had when. the public comments and the hearings we've had when we did the amendment of our codes, and the people have told us, a majority of the people have told us what they want. They've told us, it's a matter of do we want to listen to them? And that is my point of the future land use map.
Councilperson Fosler?
Yes, and we have addressed these code amendments. All the protections are in our code amendments now, they're all there.
Okay, any other comments? Well, then, it's time to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. We now have a new Flume, is it? Flume. Flume, it's a horrible name, exactly. Okay, we're going to move on to item 11B, conduct a public hearing, consider an act on resolution number R 2025-80, approving the consent to the creation of a municipal utility to be known as Bastrop County Municipal, sorry, Bastrop County Municipal Utility District Number 5, located west of State Highway 304 and north of Lower Red Rock Road, with a portion of the property being located within the one-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction or ETJ of the city of Bastrop, and the remainder of the property being located within the voluntary ETJ of the city of Bastrop, as attached in Exhibit A, also commonly known as Ironwood Development. Mr. Rosales?
Mayor Protim, council? We're talking about Ironwood tonight. This is the location map. We're located south of 304, north of Lower Red Rock, and north of Bob's Trail. This will be to the west side of 304. Concept plan, this has changed quite a bit, but this was the, one of the attachments for the original concept plan. Acreage change, so since P&amp;Z, this was introduced in P&amp;Z on May 1st, since that time, we've had a reduction in acreage from 289.4 acres to 289.249. That was to resolve a conflict, and there's a new meets and bounds that was provided in the update. Since that, we've had an additional potential conflict that the developers agreed to resolve as part of, just as they did with the previous resolution. All right, so let's talk about what is a municipal utility district? So a MUD is a type of special purpose government that provides infrastructure and services like water, sewage, drainage, and roads. Support planned developments by providing financing for necessary utilities, services to the find area, so their financing mechanism to, so that the cities aren't financing them or a developer, this is a tool that they have to the developer to finance, same as a public improvement district or a PID, and there's other, other approved state financing mechanisms. MUDs are created by either TECQ, the state legislators, or they can receive consent from cities or counties. They're regulated by the, they're a regulated political subdivision by the state, and they're regulated in the Texas Water Code. They're managed by a publicly elected board of directors, and they must follow Texas, the Toma, the Texas Open Meetings Act, and Texas Public Information Act. So that's kind of a MUD. They're set up by the legislator, they're allowed by law, they only need consent from a city, but they can also receive consent from the other authorities.
And we have those.
Yes, and we have those. We have tons of them. We have the Colony, we have Silverleaf, we have multiples of these. West Bastrop Village, there's some other ones out there. So tonight, we're discussing the consent, and so staff is recommending the approval of the consent resolution that is provided, 2580, approving the consent of the MUD, and you'll have to open a public hearing. Any questions thus far? And the developer is also here, if we have any questions specific to the developer.
Do you have a question, Councilperson? Okay, go ahead.
As far as outreach to the citizens in the MUD from the developer, how much has taken place with that?
I will let the developer answer.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lisa Clark, and I'm with WB Land, who is the developer of this project. There are currently no residents in the area that's going to be in the MUD. Now, there's properties around us, of course.
Yes, that's, that's, I'm sorry, that's what my question was, the properties around, the outreach to the property owners around. Because it was stated at the planning and zoning meeting, the first meeting, that there would be outreach, and that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, we spoke to a couple of folks this afternoon. We've not been given anyone's contact information until 10 minutes before the meeting started, but we did take time to meet with them and talk through their issue, and we're working on that.
Councilperson Fosler?
In the last P&amp;Z meeting, I know you weren't here, but you had someone here, Ryan speaking on your behalf, yes, is he here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Would you mind? Okay. Thank you, I wasn't here, but I watched the meeting several times. There were the three very, very specific commitments to the adjoining neighbors where there were possible encroachments, and you said that you would be more than willing to meet with those neighbors, and absolutely, we can clear all that up, and to, yes, you would be willing to sit down with the invigibles from the trust and any other concerned landowner about resolving encroachment issues. So there were three times in that meeting that you said that you would reach out to them, and I understand that you're just getting their contact information tonight, but that is, we, everything that's spoken at the podium is very important to us, we take that very seriously.
Yes, so actually, we, we spoke after the P, or after the P&amp;Z hearing, and he was going to reach out to me, but had arbitration, and so that did not occur.
Okay.
And, and I understand that Ms. Jacobs, one of the other concerned citizens, is out of the country, but we did...
Yes, she's reachable by phone and email.
I'm sorry?
She's reachable by phone and email as well.
Okay. Well, as, as I stated before, we, we are committed to resolving any issues.
Okay.
The land that was originally included within the district is in fact owned by WB Bastrop Land. There was a fence encroachment on the property, Ms. Jacobs' fence, so since that meeting, we had updated meets and bounds and an updated petition sent to the city to remove that land from the district boundaries.
Okay, thank you.
So even though we haven't been in touch with them, we were trying to resolve the issue, we did not have information to reach out to them, and so we're happy to, again, sit down and have a conversation with them. It's nobody's intent to create a district over anybody else's property, but in fact, the ownership certificate, as we stated before, does reflect that WB owns that land, and the survey reflects that WB owns that land, but it is WB's intention to be a good landowner, good neighbor, and, and resolve any of those disputes, which is why we removed that land from the district boundary.
Okay, I think, yeah, thank you for doing that, and I think some communication needs to go along with that, so they're aware of that as well. Thank you.
Yes, and just to add to that, I did share my personal cell phone number and my email address with the two property owners in question, so that they can reach me whenever they, they need to, and he has shared his contact info. So again, I'll reiterate, it's not our intention to be bad neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. I've been doing master plan communities for 40 years, and I always try to be a good neighbor. A lot of times, we aren't really welcome, but we try to do the, the best that we can to be good neighbors.
In terms of the neighbor that you've already resolved an issue, was that Patricia Jacobs? Was that the one that you've resolved already?
Yes, Jacobs, the adjacent neighbor.
Okay, so that...
And that's the, so we removed...
Yeah, let's come and speak on the microphone.
So, we, we provided an updated petition that removed, I think, .164 acres from the district boundary, which is where the fence...
And that's why it changed in size, right?
Yes, correct, which is where the fence encroachment was, yeah.
Okay. And so, before I open the public hearing, I want to tell the public that our discussion in executive session on this item was to get a deep understanding of the, of the law and, and what we are required to do and allowed to do in this particular case. And what happens is, is we have a development agreement, which is a contract signed with the developers, that says that we are required to approve this thing within 60 days, and that 60-day timeframe falls after our next council meeting. And so, we like the progress that's taken place so far. We'd like to see a little bit more of that before we approve the, the final version, just to be sure that all of the issues are, you know, taken care of with the, the other landowners that are neighboring, and, and they may already be, or maybe they're not, but just, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's on that front. But then it puts us in the position of, of being required to approve it in order to be, to meet the terms of the contract that we're under. But I wanted to tell you that, that we are likely to just move this table, this item specifically, to that next meeting to, to make a decision at that point, but I wanted to tell you that in case it would factor into what it is you wanted to say to us in the public hearing, that I'm also required to open and allow you to speak. You may also speak at the next council meeting, you're not required to speak today, you'll have an opportunity to speak then as well. So, I'm going to open that public hearing right now. Let's see. Here we go. At 8:35. So the public hearing is now open. So I have a statement here from Jack and Phyllis Burns, who does not wish to speak but record their opposition to this item. We have Jane D Y A L Dial, who does not wish to speak but wishes to record in opposition to this item. We have Karen Cathy, who does wish to speak. So tell us your name and your address.
My name is Karen Cathy, I represent the Haulcat Irrevocable Trust. 246 Bob's Trail, we have the 106 acres of land. We've, we've spoken to the representatives about that, the, the point that is an encroachment, so I'm not going to go through that. My concern, let me just give you a little background. I'm from a family that, we've lived in Bastrop. My grandfather, John L. Hall, their family owned 325 acres, we're down to the last 106 acres, and that's what the family now considers with the trust. My only concern right now is the MUD. I'm not opposed to the MUD district, but I am opposed to the MUD taking, taking some of our resources. We had a letter from Aqua Water a few years back, same thing, they wanted to purchase part of the land. We spoke again, saying, speak to us, we can come to some agreement, nothing. So now they camped out 300, 300 feet from the same property, and I'm assuming it's for the same thing, for the water. So that is my major concern right now, which I know that's not the developers, but the Aqua Water, still, that's going to be an issue. Again, I'm not against the MUD, but Aqua Water cannot just now camp out 300 feet outside of land they wanted to purchase and suck off the resources. So that is my concern at this point. And thank you for hearing me, and I'm going to leave up the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we have Garland Stillwell, who wishes to speak on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, my name is Garland Stillwell, executive administrative aide to the Haulcat Trust, 246 Bob's Trail, Bastrop. If I can have Mr. Guerrero to put the main survey image on the board, and while he's doing that, Councilwoman Fosler, I just would like to indicate that after the May 1 planning meeting, Mr. Harper did reach out to us, and Ms. Jacobs, the adjacent property owner, over the last three weeks, we have been swapping information, survey plans from our respective records to articulate the issue, and I just want to make this a matter of record, and I have a proposed condition that I think capsulates what we've discussed. We are not in opposition, per se, but we like to make a potential conflict as a matter of record. Could I have the Ironwood survey shown? Yes. If you're looking at the plat of Ironwood, this point, which is the southern tip, is a quadrupoint that reflects four lots. This area going clockwise is the property of 100 acres owned by the Haulcat Trust. This plat is 1921, the property was converted to a trust in 2023, and you are looking at the old property owner's reference, but it is now a trust. These two lots going clockwise are owned by Patty Jacobs, and this, of course, is Ironwood. The issue that Ms. Jacobs and we have been discussing is we share a common fence point, in fact, we just put a new fence in approximately a week, a couple of weeks ago. Bob's Trail is our main entrance to the property. Unlike Patty Jacobs, our property has no frontage on 304. The issue that we brought to the attention of the developer is this quadrupoint, as it radiates out, there is a possibility, all by slight, that the survey plat is wrong in the sense that the lot line lays across Patty Jacobs' fence, and we're saying this needs to be verified, because this radiation, this point that radiates out affects all four lots. The issue that was indicated earlier relates to property further north along the lot line, closer to 304. So we believe that this is easily solvable, it just takes a little bit further study, and in the past three weeks, we have shared our historical information with Ms. Jacobs, our aerial photography, and Ms. Jacobs has shared our information, and so that also is why there's been lack of communication. This has happened very quickly over the past three weeks, but Mr. Harper did reach out to us immediately after the hearing. I would like to read a proposed condition that we believe addresses this, if I may.
Go ahead.
And I did, for, I emailed this to you, but it was a result of our meeting right before the hearing. The proposed condition would be, "Any final meets and bounds description and boundary configuration of the MUD may be amended or adjusted without requiring additional council approval solely to resolve a bona fide property boundary issue with an adjacent property owner, including but not limiting to Patty and Jacobs, provided that, one, the adjusted boundary is supported by a mutually agreed upon legal survey or settlement between the affected parties; two, the modified legal description does not reduce the total acreage of the MUD by more than 1% or materially alter the development plan as approved; and three, all such boundary adjustments are recorded in the official public records of Bastrop County and submitted to the city's planning and development department within 90 days of final resolution." This would be our proposed condition, subject to your amendment.
So, our city attorney tells us that that's not required, that you don't, in order for us to approve the MUD, which, like I said, we weren't planning to do this evening, that we don't, that a minor amendment to the meets and bounds can be made without having to come back to us for approval, it would just be notification?
Correct.
And so, the, the addition of the language that you suggested, I would want legal to review and such, but I don't even know that that's required, because we, when the MUD gets approved, we can approve it, and then if it needs to be changed in some miniscule way, it doesn't have to come back to this body for approval.
Right, and that is our understanding, so the language could be notification language. We, we took the most strict approach, in our approach. I, I'm trying to avoid stepping on Patty Jacobs' arguments, I believe she's presented a statement of her position into the record, and our goal is to make sure that this is a matter of record. And again, we are not in strict opposition, we want to just make sure that this is a matter of record that needs to be resolved, and we think it's, it's easily resolvable, it just took some time to just clearly clarify what was going on.
Well, the other thing is that there is not a if-then kind of a problem here, there's not an order of operations issue. If, so for instance... If, so for instance, the legal ownership issue is not something that this body can adjudicate. It's got to be adjudicated by a district court, for instance. And so, this body can approve the mud consent for the creation per the terms of our contract. And then, once you've reached the position where, you know, you're in litigation for an extended period of time...
Or it can be resolved, right.
Or it can be resolved. Either way, if that changes the meets and bounds, then it changes the meets and bounds, and we're fine with that.
Correct, and everyone would just be notified of the new meets and bounds description. And that's all we're saying, that that needs to be corrected.
Well, but I'm saying...
That may need to be...
No, I'm saying that it's not necessary to do anything. That's the way it works by default.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
But you, the council would like to know if there's a change in the meets and bounds.
Sure.
So, Mayor Protim, I have a question. Given everything that you just stated, and given that it's an issue between the mud, the developer, and the property owners, is that a correct statement, Lisa, that...
Yes.
Oh, thank you, Lisa.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Well, and so, the position that Legal has given us is this is an agreement between parties. This is not an agreement for the council. And so, if the parties have agreed, where are we with council?
I mean, our role is, is and always has been, the consent. The developers came to us for that consent. They could have gone to TCEQ, they could have gone to the Texas Legislature, and, I don't know, a year and a half ago or so, we received one up in Wildwood that was simply handed to us from the legislature, saying, "Here, this has been created." So, there's many different paths. So in terms of this one, I mean, certainly, we have the option of pushing it to the next meeting, like we discussed, or...
Well, so the landowner made a comment. I want Lisa, for the record, to get up and speak, that that is, you know, gospel, because, again, Legal has told us our role is to get out of the way of the property owners.
Right, right. In terms of the land ownership dispute question, that is absolutely not for this body to adjudicate.
And so, let me state the gospel. It is our full intent to work through these issues as they've been brought to us. We just learned about this new one tonight. I've already given my survey team the authority to go and verify that line, to verify that from that quadrant up. We've had two surveys done since the time we purchased the property, and both of them don't show anything different than what we show, which is that fence line that is on our property, and we have taken that out, without even speaking to Ms. Jacobs, we've taken that out of the mud, and our intent is to work through that issue with her. Was that the gospel you were looking for?
So, then, the remaining question is, any other property line disputes, as he described, would be worked out. It would be descriptive to the council regardless of the outcome.
Yes, and that was my intent when I said, "This new discrepancy that we're working through that as we speak."
And then, the result of that is a lawsuit between y'all.
Well, no.
Not us.
No.
Well, in the...
That's not where we're headed.
I know. I'm speaking because the mud attorney is sitting right there. In the atomic option, as we were told by Legal, the responsibility of the city is to not be in default.
Correct.
And get ourselves sued.
Yes, so if we got into some big dispute and some big fight between property owners, the resolution is through a court of law. That is not our intent.
That...
Yes, that, our intent is to work with the folks that have spoken tonight, as well as Ms. Jacobs, and resolve the issue.
Which goes back to the point of the council. I don't see a delay in a vote to the next council meeting if there's already a legal or an attempt to resolve legally what the council has no business being in anyway, so...
If I could just clarify, we've provided the developer our surveys, which show the quadrupoint and our fence line. Our primary concern is our, from the Hallcat Estate Trust, is our entrance point. So, you know, we are, we are working with everybody, and this is basically, at this point, a survey exercise. But before we could charge the surveyors to do their work, we had to articulate the issue, and from the May 1 planning here into today's date, it took us this long to just determine, oh, this is the real issue that we least need to bring to their attention, and yours. I have nothing further. I didn't know if I'm excused or not.
Yes, thank you very much. Stand there on one foot, no. Okay, so that was all of the names that I think that I had. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak on this item? Okay, no hands going up. So I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:50 PM.
Mayor Protim, I did want to make one more statement as it related to the mud and the development agreement. This is not a, this development will receive its water from Aqua via a pipeline. We have not received any information about a well, a well drilling, any of that information, just FYI.
So we've done the question phase. We've done the public hearing phase, and so now, we're on to the motion phase.
Do I...
Anyone have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to motion that we table this till June 10th.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I think that motion dies due to a lack of second. Do we have another motion?
I'm not saying I'm giving a motion. I need clarification on some things before I could, before we can get to that, and I do have some questions. So I don't know how you want to put that in there, but...
So if you have some additional questions of clarification, let's call those questions and ask them.
Thank you, thank you. And it's basically, I think, three questions, and it's got to do with the people who've spoken. I believe Ms. Cathy's, if I'm correct, problem is with probably Aqua Water, right? Okay, so that's one concern. I believe Ms. Patty Jacobs, who's not here, but the resolution has been made on the fence line. Is that correct? Okay. And the gentleman who just spoke is clear on the steps that you can take and work together, which you will work together, right? So those were my three points, that I just wanted to make sure that it's very clear that, and we appreciate you working with the neighbors, but that's what we expect because that's kind of what was said, so I just wanted that to be very clear.
Councilperson Foster, do you have a question?
I do have a question, and it's on the drawing. I know it's, can I ask a question about the drawing? It's on attachment 2, it's page 173. Would you mind pulling that up, Colin, please? So those two white arrows that are going through the property into Mrs. Jacobs' land, what are those?
Those are based on future connections, so either based off the county's transportation master plan. It wouldn't be the city's, because we don't go out that far, but it's just the future connections to adjacent land properties. As of right now, those will just be turnarounds, I'm assuming. Yeah, turnarounds, just cola sacks for future connections.
Okay, they're not planning to, okay, just wanted to make sure. Thanks. She was also wondering.
Yeah, no, they, yeah, they would just be cola sacks to meet fire code and then eventually future connections.
Like a future land use map. Like a fool. Okay, got it.
Okay, now that we have a motion, council. I'll move to approve if anybody wants to approve it.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, Councilperson Plunkett, a second from Councilperson Low. Any other discussion, council? Councilperson Foster.
I still prefer to wait, so you're going to hear me say no, but that's the reason why. I prefer to let the process play out, and there's no harm in waiting two more weeks.
Councilperson Meyer, you looked like you might want to say something. Go ahead.
Always, right? So, my concern is, what are we waiting for? Because we just covered the points, the gentlemen, y'all are going to communicate. That's why I asked the questions, because I want it to be very clear to us, and if that is going to be worked out, I don't know why we're going to wait. That's just my point.
Okay, well, I don't see any more lights, council. So, we're going to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
My favorite thing to say, the lone naysayer is Councilperson Foster. Motion passes three to one. Okay.
Council, I want to make one closing statement, because that was a comment. The folks in the audience are concerned about water. They're concerned about their wells, they're concerned about the increased water usage with this development and developments across the county. What I explained is that Aqua Water has approved this several, several meetings ago. So, in its worst-case scenario, that we don't give consent for mud and we move on, everybody, let's assume there's no development agreement, the mud's created at the legislature. Because they are in Aqua's territory, Aqua is required to serve. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. Aqua is required to serve. And so, I don't want to get Aqua in trouble and say, "Well, Aqua approved it, you know, we're done." The only way through a process like that is for Aqua to say, "We don't have any more water, we can't serve it," in which case, their option is then to go withdraw from Aqua's boundary territory. That is unlikely to happen because Aqua has federal debt. They won't let folks out of the territory because that's how they're going to pay for their debt, even if it's just $5. So, it's an issue the legislature's trying to correct, but they're making it worse. Right now, there are bills at the legislature that force cities to take lots of 1,400 square feet. So, I really encourage you, please go to Austin and yell at the top of your lungs and say, "More is not always better."
Thank you for bringing this back up and allowing it, Vice President. It could, private laws make a difference, which will, I mean, we are so close...
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
Sorry, she closed, yes. I would, I am, I'm happy to have a meeting and bring Aqua to the table, really, because I think it's important that they hear the concerns and how they can best mitigate them. I'm happy to do that. We do it at that back table.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item 11C. Consider an act on resolution number R 2025-87, approving a public information plan agreement, or PIPA, with Hunt Communities, see, that's a better name, PIPA. With Hunt Communities Bastrop LLC for the Colony Mud 1F, Section 4, as attached in Exhibit A. Mr. Rosales.
Mayor Protim, council, this is a public improvement plan agreement with the Colony Mud 1F, Section 4. We have lots of these already in process with the colony. This is just an additional section that they're wishing to move forward as attached in Exhibit A. Any questions?
Any motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilperson Meyer, a second from Councilperson Foster. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item 11D. Consider an act on resolution number R 2025-88, approving a public information plan agreement with Hunt Communities Bastrop LLC for the Colony Mud 1F, Section 5, as attached in Exhibit A.
Mayor Protim, council, this is for the Colony Mud Section, sorry, the Mud 1F, Section 5. They're doing an additional section. This is their public improvement plan agreement, as stated before.
Questions? Motions?
Before you go there, I do want to make a comment on muds, because you're going to hear them, you're going to see them. A mud is a mechanism to extend infrastructure. Cities, counties, private water utilities unable to do that, and they are, at its worst, a small city with very little rules. At its best, a well-regulated city. What we're trying to do within city muds is to give them some sort of regulation so that residents have at least a say and an understanding of what's happening around them. They're created at the legislative level, and you see the elections, it's one person on a mud board, and that person lives on a trailer on like 30 acres, and nobody ever really knows who that person is. All kinds of things can happen, and we're trying really hard with whatever tools we have available to bring some order to the chaos that is development in Texas right
So, council, who made that motion? Plunkett, who seconded it?
Second.
Okay, so Councilperson Plunkett made the motion, and Councilperson Meyer seconded said motion to approve 11D. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. On to 11E. Consider an act on resolution number R 2025-89, approving a public information plan agreement with Continental Homes of Texas LP for Valverde, Section 2, Phase 4, as attached in Exhibit A.
Mayor Protim, council, this is for the public improvement plan agreement, or PIPA. This is with Continental Homes of Texas, or for Valverde, Section 2, Phase 4. We're moving right along. This is for the Valverde backside, and this is pushing forward with another phase. Any questions?
Any motions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve from Councilperson Foster, a second from Councilperson Low. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. We are now on to item number 12. Adjournment. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Well, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, so thank you, Bastrop. We'll see you next time. Adjourned at 9:02 PM.